Okay, good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of May 8th, 2025. Due to our recent election, we customarily do the reorganization of members at the very first meeting following that election. And so I will begin by asking if there is a motion to nominate a chair of the school committee.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Jackie for chair.
I second that.
Okay. All in...
To nominate her?
Are you okay with that?
As a seasoned veteran, can we let you know?
Are you accepting that nom... Okay. Any discussion on the topic or questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Madam Chair, would you like to take over for vice chair?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm in favor for nomination for vice chair, Lauren Loomis. Do I have a second?
Pursue your second.
On favor.
Thank you.
New day with a new mic.
Okay.
Okay, so welcome to the Eastern School Committee meeting of Thursday, May 8th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by ECAT. It is open to the public and we will get started. First on the agenda is our student representative to the school committee update, Marvel.
We have all of us coming up today.
Marvel and team, I love it. Thank you all. Do you have mics?
Yes, we're gonna go up to the podium.
Awesome.
All right. Hi, I'm Veronica Shanoi. I'm a junior at Oliver Ames and I'm representing Blanche James today.
She's not here.
General updates, Blanche James just had their...
Can you hold on one second? We don't think that Jackie, I mean that Chrissy can hear. Mrs. Pruitt, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear. Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, so some Blanche James updates. They just had their Harlem Wizards game to raise money for Blanche James. Super successful, full house. Teachers did lose, but you know, it was a great bet.
Not by much, they only won four.
Six points, six points, a pretty bet. So end of the year activities, mostly field trips. First grade is attending a baseball game, I believe. And the second grade visited the Museum of Science and they're planning for their concerts. For the school improvement plan and curriculum planning, Mr. C. along with a bunch of the pre-K team and specialists are working on building a new pre-K curriculum for next year. They have a scheduled meeting on May 16th to go over that. And then their school improvement plan for next year is really focusing on developing a positive culture, especially with student relationships. So making sure that students are treating each other respectfully. And one of the ways they're gonna do that is the bucket filler initiative that they will be bringing out next year. That's for Blanche.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leigh Vora. I'm representing Richardson Olmstead. And there's no updates for this week, but my plan for the rest of the year, the school year, is to continue attending Citizen of the Month ceremonies and meeting with Mr. Getchel to narrow down some specific concerns or desires from students and continue to hear about their amazing experiences in third, fourth, and fifth grade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Brendan Dolan for EMS. So there's no update for EMS this time, but I would like to go see students maybe once or twice more. Ms. Meehan, I'll send you guys an email soon and maybe Mr. Carroll too to end the year. However, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize Ms. Wiseman for when we were at Down the Hill, which one of you guys can provide more context to that. I saw really firsthand truly admirable dedication for your advocacy for educational policy, really evidently with the best interests of students and staff of the district in heart. So thank you on behalf of all students. And Ms. Prowler and Ms. Loomis, you guys are good too. And then Marvel.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marvel Nemmer. I'm a senior and I'm going to be covering for Franklin. He does Oliver Ames. So Oliver Ames has had quite the eventful couple of months. We had seniors having their day of kindness, which was amazing and successful. I was at RO and I was cleaning science closets and at first it seemed a little treacherous, but after that it was really soothing and like, you know, seeing the final product. Mr. Chase, shout out to Mr. Chase, really, really helped us out. And then OA also has had a lot of shows, like art shows. They have the spring concert tonight and there was the arts and business or applied arts and business show going on tonight as well. Great way to showcase everyone's, you know, talents and all their work throughout the year. And then we've had AP exams so far. They finished or were finishing up the first week and then we have next week as well. So students have been working pretty diligently throughout the whole entire year and they get to showcase their efforts and their intelligence and all that they learned. And then the April break trips, we had Costa Rica and France. Amazing reviews from both those trips. A lot of the students had amazing fun. I had a lot of fun in France. And yeah, I think not only, I think it was very, it wasn't only fun and games as much as I wish it was. I did actually come back and I was like, wow, like I really do understand, you know, a lot more French than I did before. You can, Mr. Sharky will be the first to tell you that. But yeah, other than that, I was going great at OA.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you have any questions?
Any committee members have questions or comments?
There, I think there are 10 days, yeah, 10 days for seniors. Oh, yeah.
Thank you all so much. Love your reports. Okay, next item is a vote to approve out-of-state trip. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. The middle school, Vanessa Rizzi, teacher at the middle school, is working on organizing an out-of-state trip. It used to be a trip to the Museum of Fine Arts where they would, part of their social studies unit on mummies. They had exhibits there. They've had some difficulty with transportation, as we all have, and so they are switching it to Rizzi. So the entire sixth grade will be going, the Ruby team on June 10th, the Emerald team on June 11th, and the Sapphire team on June 13th. It is $28 per student. As always, there is a fund to cover for any student that can't afford the cost of the field trip. And it is aligned with the social studies and also the art standards. They are going to be looking at the ancient Egypt exhibits about gods and heroes. There's a gods and heroes tour, Egyptian artifacts. There's also an opportunity for them to take a look at Greek and Roman mythology for their studies next year. And Wit and Wisdom has a hero's journey unit that will correspond as well. So they are looking for your approval. As you know, per policy, any school field trip out of the state requires a special vote of the school committee and Rizzi is obviously in Rhode Island, so they are asking for your support for their field trip.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Cabral? Nope. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the out-of-state trip to Rizzi.
So move Pursue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.
Jackie, as our policy person as well, should we consider adopting the policy to include Rhode Island? I feel like we approve a lot of Rhode Island trips.
You mean to not have to vote on them?
Yeah. I'm wondering if we want to...
We can look into that. I'm not sure if that's based on anything in the law or in the mask regulate, you know, suggestions or anything, but we can definitely look into that. It's a good idea.
Given our proximity, it feels like it might just simplify some things.
Okay, great. Vote to approve transportation contract. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. The, yes, Director of Finance is filling in for Director Kopaz tonight and she's going to talk about this contract for one of our transportation providers.
Good evening. Tonight we have a contract for a transportation provider, Purple Lady. And we do have a contract that we already have approved earlier this year for about $18,000. Based off of current need and where we believe we are going to end fiscal year, for fiscal year '25, we have a contract before you for an additional $57,000 in transportation costs. And the services that are provided by this vendor are related to McKinny Vento or our homeless student transportation. We also have out-of-district costs that are covered or out-of-district transportation that is covered via this contract. And we also have our DCF or foster care transportation that's also covered by this vendor. The $57,000, we'll be able to ensure that we have enough funds available for transportation for the remainder of the school year. And we also have an estimate included in case we do have an additional, I believe we have the purchase order out there for additional two students under McKinny Vento and one student under DCF if we happen to have additional needs for the rest of the school year. So this is the contract that we have before you and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Sorry, I would just add that this is the category that we have been struggling with year over year because every single expenditure is an unanticipated one in this category. So whether it's out-of-district special education or a displaced student or family or a student moves into DCF custody. And so we have been incrementally adding, but as you know, in a lean budget, you can't really put in a lot of buffers. And so this is truly reactive and how we're operating is reactive as the students are added. And so we're hoping that this is enough to get us through the end of the school year. We don't know, of course, it is totally possible that we could have changes, but this is our best educated estimate based on what we've had so far this year.
If I also could add, sorry, I'm like the voice from above over here. This vendor has, is a newer vendor of ours and they have been extremely reliable and they are at a lower cost compared to some of the other vendors that we work with. Dr. Cabral is 100% correct that this is a category that could go up at any time without any notice. So it isn't really important, you might in the foreseeable future see us coming back to you to raise that line, but we are ensuring that we are going to be utilizing funds. We're gonna be looking to transfer funds, which Director Sardzewski will get into also to make sure that that fills the transportation that's needed here.
Questions?
I do. Yeah, go ahead.
And I don't know how exactly to ask this, but is, are these vans or are they like cars?
I believe it's vans for the way that they're being transported.
They are. They're vans.
Okay, cuz the category of who they're transporting, I'm concerned about like discretion of like, so are... No, just to like not identify what these students are getting transported for? Cuz if it has Purple Lady on the vehicle, like that's concerning to me.
Well, we also, we have also used this vendor for athletics, for other things. So they're not just used for this.
Okay.
We are using them now because they're the least expensive and they are, they're very responsive, actually. We've had, we have had a lot of luck. I know the name threw a few people off when we first contracted with them, but they are among one of our most reliable vendors at this point. And so we are, we're utilizing them for this, but it's not all we utilize them for.
Okay, cuz that would be my concern, that I would want, you know, McKinny Vento, DCF, like those students to be protected and not...
Sure. Not pull up at school was something that we use as a flag of identification.
Yeah, cuz that's no one's business.
Yeah.
Jim, did you have a question?
Yes. This is an additional to $18,000. So did $18,000, I guess my question, one of the questions is, did say $18,000 get us from September 1st to now and 57 is the rest of this year or is this supplemental?
So that contract is executed in December and that got us to about March.
With this vendor?
Yeah, with this particular vendor.
McKinny Vento in total is a six-figure amount.
Right, so then we're, this is paying for, from March to hopefully the end of the year?
Correct.
The end of June?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Are they picking up more, more business from other vendors that we have? Are they, are they, are you substituting them for other vendors?
So we could go out and use some of our other transportation providers, but as Dr. Pruitt, not Dr. Pruitt, not yet, as Assistant Superintendent Pruitt pointed out, they are a lower-cost provider. So usually when we are executing contracts, we are getting quotes from the vendors to see what the daily rate would be to just compare if they're the best vendor for the needs that we have. So that process was done and we reached out and then said, hey, there's our need for the remainder of the year for the contract.
And we're paying them a daily rate? Is that how it's calculated?
For each of the trips, yeah.
Okay. How long have we been using them?
We, I don't know, the first year we started using Purple Lady, we did use them last school year as well.
Yeah.
I think it's been a couple of years. That's why it's a newer vendor, yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
It is quite a name.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So the $18,000 from December to March, 57 from March to hopefully June?
Yeah.
That is reflective of an increase in student need over that period of time?
Correct. And also...
Unanticipated.
Yeah, and anticipated need as well for the McKinny Vento student bucket.
But there's, $18,000 is not all we spent from September?
No, but I'm just...
Okay.
For three months to now, another three to four months. It's a big jump. That's why I was just asking.
Right, because that, they're not the only vendor that we used in the first part of it. So they may be a vendor we're using for students that had another vendor in the beginning of the year.
Okay, that's a good clarification.
Good question.
Sorry, we signed it in December, but did we start using them in January?
They were started, we started using them before that.
The $18,000, I thought we signed like late December.
Because the contract was under $25,000, I don't believe that came before school committee because it was under the threshold, so that was probably not brought to your attention at that time.
My question escaped me. It'll come back.
Kelly, do you have something else you wanna ask?
I did and I like, it went out of my head as I was trying to clarify something else.
I have something.
So go for it. You'll fill in for me till I think of it.
As I keep thinking of things.
Yeah, that's okay.
The, I guess, more financial structure, where does, is the $57,000 coming from pre-allocated transportation budget of $1 million or whatever the number is? Or is this have to be potentially pulled from somewhere else if it's unexpected?
To be able to fund this, we will pull from existing our contract services line for regular transportation based off where we're at a year-to-date, but we also will be bringing forward budget transfer to school committee for approval at the next meeting. And we are pulling from multiple funding sources in order to fund this. Right now, we've identified, I believe, a professional development line because we have had grant funding to be able to cover some of the costs this year. But yes, we are going to allocate funds from other lines to be able to fund this.
Okay.
When we, when we switch lines from cost centers, we bring forward the transfers to the school committee, so you will see all of those. And so this is a perfect example of one that will be on there.
Okay.
And the lines we're taking from, we feel we can do that. There's no additional...
Exactly. We'll still be able to continue with the planned activities throughout the remainder of the school year to be able to fund this particular program.
I realize we have no choice. So I mean, if there is, we must do that, it's just more like understanding the implications.
Yeah, that there's not a cut that's happening or reduction in one area to be able to fund this area, but we've identified that there are funds available to be able to fund this.
Thank you. That was my question.
Did you have a question? Yeah, I was just wondering, how many, how many vendors do we, do we use to support all of those categories? Or are we just using Purple Lady for McKinny Vento, foster care, and out-of-district?
Off the top of my head, four to five transportation vendors I can think of that we use regularly across the board. And there may be a litany when we're in a bind that we have a go-to list for vendors that we can call up if we need to, because maybe these vendors are great, but they may not have availability for some of the transportation needs that we have.
Thank you. There are a lot of, a lot of one-off transportation needs, like field trips and things of that nature. So our, we call it our big bus or our general ed and our special education transportation providers have not been able to meet our need. And so Director Kopaz has a bank of vetted vendors that he has already made, already entered into negotiations with in terms of rates and hours and things like that. And so he has a series to choose from. We have a lot of different reasons for transportation, for being responsible for providing transportation for students, so we do need multiple vendors, unfortunately.
Any other questions? Okay, so I will take a motion to approve the transportation contract with Purple Lady.
So move Loomis.
Do I have a second?
So move Loomis.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, discussion of upcoming town and school subcommittees. So I think I copied for everyone. I hope you all have a copy of the current 2024, 25 subcommittees. Does everyone have that?
Yep.
So I just thought, we're not, we're only gonna vote on one of them today, but I just wanted to give you the list so that you have the opportunity to take them home, look at them, think about them. And at the next meeting, we can take motions for who wants to be on what. Now, my recollection, and I'll double-check this with the town clerk tomorrow, is that a lot of these subcommittees, the term expires June 30th. And so then we go again and we have to renew, we have to renew the people being assigned to different committees. Town committees have to actually go to the town clerk's office and get sworn in.
Correct.
So this is kind of filling in for now and then we can reevaluate. So if you're on a committee and then decide that really wasn't for me, we can certainly reevaluate when we look at this again. So it looks like the openings we're gonna have are on FEE, which I'm not even sure. I have to call the president of FEE and just see what's going on with that, if they're still meeting.
So...
Do you, do you know?
Nancy has shared that I believe they are not meeting yet, but they've been communicating over email because there is talk of bringing something back because the, obviously the budget issues that we're having and FEE is for technology, so FEE raises money for technology. So I believe that they are planning on resurrecting.
Okay, great. The naming subcommittee, we're gonna have an opening on that. Negotiation subcommittee will have an opening on that. Policy, right now I've been working with Nancy DeLuca and Carol Perez on going through our current policy manual, making sure it's up to date with all the legal changes, making sure policies that really don't even fit with us anymore are taken out. We're just kind of doing a cleanup. So I think we're gonna keep that, that committee as is right now, even though Nancy's no longer a committee member. We got advice from our legal counsel that she can still stay on that committee while we're just doing this cleanup. Once that project is done, we'll assign new people to the policy committee going forward. Okay. Let's see. The Audit Committee. The MBTA Community Zooing Implementation Review Team. I need to check on that.
Yeah, was that a one-time?
Yeah, that, I'm not sure if that's, yeah, I'm not sure. I'm gonna check on that. We'll have an opening on Municipal Building Committee, which we'll talk about tonight. The Town Budget Subcommittee will have an opening. ECAT will have an opening. And then the Frothingham Memorial Corporation Board of Directors, it's always the chair of the school committee that serves on that. So, you know, just think about it, read the, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We are missing one on this list.
What are we missing?
FYI, we added a school committee member to the master plan. So I'm on the master plan at the moment.
Okay, I'll make sure that gets put on.
It's a short-term item, so I mean, I'd be open to changing if someone felt strongly about it, but it is meant to be completed by, I believe, end of summer.
Okay. Yeah, so just look at the descriptions, let me know if you have any questions, and then at the next meeting, we can talk about who wants to do what. Go ahead.
Are there any meetings happening before May 22nd when we meet again or?
The only meeting I know about right now is, I'm trying to think.
Municipal Building.
The municipal, and that's why we're adding somebody tonight. And so Lauren, do you wanna talk a little bit about the Municipal Building Committee, what you're doing?
Sure.
When your next, when your meetings usually are?
Yep. So the Municipal Building Committee right now is focused on the public safety building. Right now, we're talking, we're deep in the earth and everything that they're doing while they're digging. And we will, right now, we meet monthly or approximately monthly. I think as the complex gets more off the ground, we will be meeting more frequently, doing tour, hard hat tours of the site, similarly like you did here or Blanche. Yeah, it's, it's very interesting for me to observe and be a part of, of the committee. Anyone have any questions?
When does it meet? Cuz that's one thing you both should know. Some of these meet in the evenings, some of these meet during the day, some of them meet like...
They meet in the evenings.
Okay.
Yeah. And our next meeting is May 20th, where we will be voting on something that is rather urgent. So that is why we are looking to, to appoint someone this evening and someone that is also available on May 20th.
Is anyone interested?
I'll do it, yeah.
Okay.
If no one else wants it.
All right, so I'm gonna make...
I nominate Jim.
Okay.
Second. Pursue your second.
All in favor? Congratulations, Jim.
I'll vote for myself.
Congratulations.
It's really interesting to be part of these building projects. It's so interesting. It really, it's a whole, it's like sitting in a classroom, listening to these people talk about different things. It's awesome. You'll enjoy it, yeah.
It's really interesting.
Jackie, the security one isn't on here.
No, cuz it's not a, it's not, actually I'll ask Dr. Cabral to explain it. It's, the security is kind of a, it's a offshoot of municipal.
Right. Go ahead. Yes, so Nancy DeLuca, when we met with the NBC, they supported her as sort of being their liaison between NBC and the Security Committee because she represents the school committee. So now you, you have two people that are on that, so we just need to connect with the Municipal Building Committee and let them know who may wanna be their representative on the Security Committee.
Okay, so it would have to be someone from municipal, right?
Well, that was the preference, I think, because a school committee member who's also on municipal could go back and forth between the multiple votes that need to be done. I don't know that there's any kind of statute that says it has to be, though. I don't know that.
I think it, wouldn't it, because of the signing of the, of the documents, has to be someone from Municipal Buildings as well, right?
It would definitely need to be somebody that is at every Municipal Building Committee meeting and presents to them and then does the same thing for the school committee? It would facilitate that if it's somebody that's on both?
I am more than happy to nominate myself for security.
I support that. I was definitely willing to take Nancy's role, but I did not realize that with Municipal Buildings. You are welcome to take it.
So is that a second, Kelly?
Pursue your second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Lauren, congratulations. Okay. Discussion and vote to ratify and affirm other post-employment benefits. Dr. Cabral?
Okay, thank you. So you have, I believe in your packet, you have, you have an MOU that was provided by the town administrator. Other post-employment benefits includes, it's basically healthcare for retirees. And across, this is not an Eastern issue, across the board, they are trying to fund this so that, trying to get to full funding. Full funding would mean if every person in the district retired at the same time. That is not going to be the case, but they are, we are working toward full funding and most districts, like most businesses, are really behind on this. The town has been allocating approximately $25,000 a year to this. This is a over $100 million liability at this point, so obviously that's not closing the gap. And so the town administrator met with multiple unions in the town and have agreed to participate in the mitigation of the liability from, for an annual payment of five, well, it's $5 a week, but any employee that earns less than $40,000 a year would be half of that.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about this?
I don't have a question, I have more of a comment.
Go ahead.
I think this is wonderful, of, a great example of the town all collaborating together and working together. I think it's...
I think it's a great accomplishment, and I think it's wonderful that they're doing this.
Yeah, it's something we've been talking about for a long time, so I do want to thank our union members for getting on board with this, and all the unions in the town. It's really, it's really going to be so helpful, so thank you. Anything else?
Just to be clear, the MOU is with the unions, but every employee is expected to be part of the donation, the mitigation.
Contribution.
Okay.
I see. So all town employees, regardless of whether or not they're participating in a union, are going to help with this mitigation?
Well, I can only speak for the school department.
Got it. Okay.
So if, if we vote on this and, and we vote positively on this, we all have to sign this, is that, it looks like they want our signatures for all of it?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to approve the, I'm trying to see what the best.
Jackie, may I ask one question?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Take advantage while you're looking for the name. It says after, for anyone who retires after January 1st, 2026, the town will pay 70% of the premium costs. Is that fixed for the lifetime of that retiree?
Not necessarily.
It can be changed at some point in the future?
So the town, right, so I'm speaking on the town's behalf because, because we don't negotiate this, but right now, the split is 75/25.
Right.
And part of the effort to reduce the cost to the town is to change that from 70 to 30. I believe the presentation to the school committee was to change that another 5% the following year. That is at the discretion of the town, and so that, I believe, is intended to be for the life of the person, but it certainly doesn't have to be.
Right.
I think there's something in here that keeps it at a certain rate for a certain amount of years as part of this agreement.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Easton and the Southeastern Public Employees Association Custodial Unit, Southeastern Public Employees Association Cafeteria Unit, Southeastern Public Employees Association Secretarial Unit, Eastern Educators Association Unit A, Eastern Educators Unit Association Unit B, Eastern Educators Association Paraprofessionals Unit, Eastern Patrol Officers Association, Eastern Police Supervisors Association, International Association of Firefighters Local 2790, Southeastern Public Employees Association DPW Unit, Southeastern Public Employees Association Water Unit, Southeastern Public Employees Association Clerical Unit, Eastern Professional Administrative Employees Association, regarding health insurance contribution rates and OPEB payroll deductions for fiscal year '26 to '28. Do you have a second?
Some, oh, second.
All in favor? Okay. Great.
I admit that it is reassuring to me that we are the last ones to sign this.
That we are what?
The last ones to sign this. But this has clearly gone through all the unions, we are seeing the paperwork, we know that it has gone through the town as well, so.
Yeah, and it's gone through town council, and, yeah.
Exactly. But, you know, it just, obviously, it's a significant decision on behalf of everyone to make this, to resolve this, so, yeah.
Nope, it's, it'll be very helpful. Schedule of payments since our last meeting, we signed warrants 061S and 063S. Did we? No, okay. Okay. Moving right along. Public comment? So if you have a public comment, please date your name and.
Is my mic?
Address.
Yep.
Sure.
Please wait. Please wait. Hold it. All right, is that working?
Is it, did you, is the button green?
It is green.
Okay.
It's for ECAT.
That is good to know. Zachary Dyer, 24more Street, on behalf, oh, that turns awesome. I'll take a lecture whenever I can get one. Zachary Dyer, 24more Street, on behalf of the Eastern Educator Association. Good evening. F. Scott Fitzgerald once said that it is the test of a great mind that, to be able to hold two opposed ideas in one's mind without losing the ability to take action, and that is the challenge we face before us tonight and in the next few months of Easton's voting. The first truth that we must hold tonight is brutal, but simple, that our schools are woefully underfunded. Easton is spending less per student than nearly any of our neighbors, yet still delivers a product that far surpasses them. Our town spends less per student than the state average, and yet our educators have never and will never take that as an excuse to settle for average. Across every metric, we excel. For years, we have done more with less, taking pride in our frugality, but it has proven unsustainable in the face of a crisis that is brutalizing towns all across our Commonwealth. The origin of this problem is clear. A hard limit of 2.5% increase to growth cannot complete, compete with inflation, and the state has virtually abandoned towns like Easton. The legislature has made it clear that they have no intention to fix funding formulas that leave over 70% of towns as minimum aid districts. That, Easton has weathered that designation longer than most, but our lean spending has at last reached a limit. We believe that our students deserve more than a minimum aid that at $30 could barely cover the cost of some printer paper. When a town like Easton finds itself in a multimillion-dollar hole, it is not the result of gross incompetence or mismanagement. A hole this big is systemic, it is structural, and it is not attributable to a single individual or group of individuals. We acknowledge this truth and wish nothing more than there were a simple solution, that we could find a single bad actor that we could point to and find ourselves in a surplus. That is not the case. We will never be able to keep up with inflation until the state takes action, and we hope that you join us with that action at the State House. In the meantime, this town needs an override. Our schools in this town will suffer without it. That is a truth, albeit a tough one to swallow. Now we have to come to our second truth that we must hold, a lack of trust in our own school leadership. Our current district's leaders have lost the faith of their educators by ignoring concerns and failing to hold central administrators accountable for the decisions they make. The claims made in our budget process, that the process is a result of teacher requests, flies directly in the face of what numerous occasions when educators spoke up against a policy only to be derided and ignored. This district's leadership has not earned our trust. It will take years for them to make the substantial amends necessary to do that. There are valid feelings of rage and despair, much of which we have expressed in this committee before, and we will continue to bring those forward. We will never stop speaking up to protect our staff from policies that we find are disconnected from the daily realities in the lives of our educators and our students. In the face of this second and no less pressing truth, we understand those that are reluctant to pass an override. Accountability is central to their concerns. While we may support it privately, while we absolutely understand the consequences, there is a human desire to hold bad actors responsible, to refuse to give what some call a blank check to the very administration that so often has ignored the needs and the cries of our educators. That said, we have no other option. The absence of additional revenue will assuredly harm our educators, and most importantly, it will harm our students. As we have seen, it will be our frontline educators who are let go. It will be our students who will have to go without the programming they deserve, and it will be our townspeople whose property values will plummet. Beyond that, it will be our Easton community that will wait longer for emergency services to our own detriment. As a union of educators who have all gone through multiple training sessions on how we should respond to school violence, who have all witnessed the value firsthand of first responders responding quickly and effectively to our needs, we cannot in good faith stand by as the police and fire who respond to us when we are in need and when there is a tragedy are slashed. These are our two truths. We do not trust this administration, but trust may not even be necessary at this critical juncture. In the absence of immediate action, the gains we have made to support every student within this community will be pride from our grasp. We ask that you support this override, we ask that you support our schools, we ask that you support our educators, and that you support the generations of students that walk our halls today and will walk them again tomorrow. We will keep fighting, we will be speaking up, and we will keep the pressure on every future administrator and administration who seeks to ignore the educators that make our schools great. We will fight for small class sizes, we will fight for mental health resources, for special education supports, and yes, for wages that prevent us from losing the top-notch educators that we have to local districts. We ask that you join us in that fight. The first step is making sure that we have the funds we need to bring our educators back into the classroom and back into the lives of our children. Thank you.
Superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So we have been updating regularly on our priority restorations, and we have given a list in slides and in emails and in writing on what they are, based on the amount that has been given to us for an override, which is $2,060,000 for the school department. In that, we need to account for items such as our incentive program and for unemployment because we are self-insured. Other than that, we have, or I have met with the leadership team and asked them if within those priority areas, they could actually rank them in order of priority. And so they did that, and I, I shared that, and we're going to make it part of our presentation on our website. There was a strong request when we met to add particular items that I will note. We have not made those decisions yet, they are data-based, and the data was provided to us, but I'll, I'll note that. The first priority is the elementary and specialist teachers. That is in order from K to grade six, and that will be based on enrollment, of course. We're very mindful of trying to keep all our class sizes small, but we have agreed as a leadership team to move from elementary up. And there was an art, oh, a art teacher position reduced by 0.4, and that's also a priority, in addition to a nurse and paraprofessionals. I will note that we had a really productive meeting with Colin Clark, who's our nurse coordinator, and she was able to confirm that having two, two medical professionals at each building for next year is safe and adequate. However, we do have a concern about the amount of time that the nurses are not in for multiple reasons, whether it's training or absences. And so we did discuss the addition of one of the nurses that was reduced until we, or unless we can figure out that issue. When they're not present, obviously, that's a concern, and we want to make sure that there are continually two people in every building. When you have a lot of absences, I believe to date, we had about 175 for the nurses, and so that's almost.
175 absences?
Right.
Okay.
So that's almost a full-time position. So we talked about what is the best way to fill that, and we are very interested in doing it with a registered nurse, who's one of our nurses, as opposed to a series of substitutes that might come in. So that's on here, but that may be not necessary to be on the override.
What is the cost comparison of using substitute nurses for 175 days versus staffing? I realize that a staff nurse obviously then knows the students, right? You can't know every student on campus, but they know the ones with the extraordinary needs, of course. And then there's obviously, in benefits that are provided to that individual, but do we have a sense of how cost comparative those two things are?
Yeah, it's, it's a bit more costly, but not so much so that we think it's not worth the value of having somebody that knows the schools, knows the staff, and is, is a reliable person, so that if we had multiple absences in one day, we wouldn't have to necessarily look. Or if it's a hard-to-get day, maybe it's a Friday, for example, and it's hard to get subs, we feel like it's more important to have a person there all the time.
I think that's in alignment with sentiment that we've shared.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I think that's in alignment with sentiment that we've shared in the past about our concern, so I appreciate you all looking at that so closely.
Yep, we did. Student programs, so NRT and SEA were the two major reductions that we made in terms of student programming. NRT is the sheet pasture programming. We are going to limit that. There is a small component that is going to continue because we do, there is a trust that funds part of that, but that's a trust that usually runs under about $30,000, and the total of the contract is $90,000. So we did need to utilize that as a cost savings, as opposed to people, and so we're going to work on reducing the number of grades that that serves. If we were to get the override, we would increase the number of grades. It would not, we do not anticipate that it would be to the level it is now, which is all the way through sixth grade, but we are looking to increase it. And the SEA, or the summer program, runs now in conjunction with the ESY, which is the extended-year program. And so that has, that is something that we put together during COVID for summer loss, and it has been extremely popular, and we have had it filled every year. However, that was one of the items that was funded with federal stimulus funds, and so we have tried to work out some cost-neutral options or some less expensive options. For example, we have created a partnership with Bridgewater State, and so they're going to be providing their graduate literacy specialists in the summer to be working with the students, and it provides them an opportunity to work with the students. We will, of course, have staff supervising them, but we would like to, that's going to be limited to the students of highest need. We would like to have it go back to the way it was when we had the federal funding, which is any student that's interested. We have data from the achievement and the lack of learning loss for those students, and it has been remarkable, so it's really something that we would like to maintain.
Okay.
We also, I've expressed a few times our concern with our capital needs because we have, three of our buildings are aging, and we have negotiated with the town to engage in borrowing that allows for a very substantial security project that we feel is paramount. And so that has greatly reduced our ability to request capital funds. Right now, we are only asking for the security funds and a very small piece of our technology budget. That has all actually been put in abeyance, or most likely will be, until the fall because of the current state of the capital budget that the town administrator has explained. The additions are a multilingual learner staff. We are greatly increasing our number of newcomers and also students that are multilingual coming into the district, and so that was a request. And also, a request was a math coach at BA, because the only missing component of our coaching program from grades K to eight is the math coach at Blanch Ames. Blanch Ames is the last school that's coming online with the model that started at Richardson Olmsted, went to EMS, and now would be at Blanch Ames.
So the other schools have a, a math and a reading coach?
Correct.
Okay.
And that is a newly created, that will be a newly created?
If we do that, it would be new, yes. And we are. coaching program from grades K to eight is the math coach at Blanch Ames. Blanch Ames is the last school that's coming online with the model that started at Richardson Olmsted, went to EMS, and now would be at Blanch Ames.
So the other schools have a math and a reading coach?
Correct.
Okay.
And that is a newly created, that will be a newly created-
If we do that, it would be new, yes. And we are continuing to receive a lot of unfunded mandates from the state. MAS and MASC have put out a lot of information about these. And so we may need some assistance with our data specialist position, whether it's part-time or something, to make sure that all of that information is getting input in a timely fashion. We need to make sure we get our federal funding, our state funding, and we do our reporting on time for civil rights and many other areas. And then it goes without saying, any other unexpected urgent needs like transportation or special education. Now, there were, there are other items that would get us to $2 million. However, we didn't, I didn't have the principals list those just yet because we need to see if we're able to reinstate all of this. We still don't even know what the state budget is going to be. And so we don't know what the circuit breaker is going to be. We don't know what minimum aid is going to be. So there are a lot of, we don't know what our federal grants are going to be, so there are still a lot of unknowns just to maintain what we already have.
So House and Senate have both come out with minimum aid as 150 per student. Governor was, what, 75?
Yes. The current budget has 75 in it. The current town budget.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions about what you shared?
Of course.
So when you, I just, I know I asked this in the past, but I think it's just helpful context for everyone, too. So when you say that you kind of went through this with the leadership team and these are the requests that came, are the requests coming from the principal? Are they coming from principal and supported by analysis from another representative, say the curriculum coordinator? Like how, help us understand kind of how you manage these.
Sure. The leadership team is made up of all of the principals, the curriculum coordinator, as well as IT for that information and central admin staff. Each person is, the expectation, of course, is that each person is analyzing the information at their level, bringing it back to the team.
When you, the first list you said, which was the elementary positions, does that include the Blanch Ames literacy role or is that literacy coach?
That is, those are classroom sizes.
Classroom roles, okay. And then, so Blanch Ames-
But the literacy coach position at Oliver Ames is one of the things that they identified, but it's, it's a, I don't want to say it's small because it's really important, but it's .4 of a position. That literacy coach position at OA is .6 and it is going to be 1.0.
That's a, that's a reading specialist at Oliver Ames.
Right.
Okay, got it.
So we are, so- The high school doesn't have a coach model?
I see. So it's a reading specialist role that would be, okay. So that, the reading specialist works directly with students?
Yes.
Okay. I see, as opposed to classroom, okay.
And that's, you know, partially because we have department heads at the, at the high school. So our English department head, Principal Kavanaugh, I don't, I think, I'm not sure if she's there or not, but they have been, she's been working really hard with the department heads around looking at their role as coaching as well as leading the curriculum work and all of that. So, so there's, we're working on really ensuring that the coaches at the elementary level, the department heads at the high school and middle school level have some common practices, although there are different, different things that they do as well.
Okay. And the, so, so the OA position is a reading specialist that works with students with particular need. And then at BA, the gap that has been identified is that there is no math coach. So there remains a literacy coach. There were two literacy coaches, there remains one, but we never had a math coach at BA and so we're looking to add, that's what the request is.
That's what the request is.
Okay. I'm just trying to map all this out.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Is, so if, so we have in our budget 75 per student and if, if the 150-
Oh, you're talking about minimum aid?
Yes. So if 150 does get approved, is it safe to assume that that will come to the schools?
That does not come to schools. Minimum aid comes in the form of Chapter 70 funding, which goes directly to the town. So once the town votes on what our budget is going to be, that's what our budget is. And so any money that comes in will go to the town. Now, I will note that in the same cherry sheet, UGA, or unrestricted general aid, went down. So there is a mitigating effect if it even stays up. So we need to look at the whole charter school reimbursement, regional school reimbursement. We have to look at it all because sometimes when something goes up significantly, it is brought down usually to net zero by some other funding structure that's in there.
Does everyone know what the cherry sheet is? I don't think, can you just give them a little?
Sure. So that is just, it's a list of responsibilities or expenses for the town and they, it's, it's updated by, eh, DLS and they send it to the towns to inform them about what their responsibilities are for, like I said, charter school reimbursement or-
It's like a bill.
It's, it's a bill, basically, of all the things you have to pay for, yeah.
So they give us aid and then they tell us how much we owe them?
Basically, yeah.
And so with the unrestricted government, what is it, UGA?
Going down, yeah.
So, and that, that's the aid that comes to the town for. And if that goes down and then our bill goes up, then if we get extra money from the minimum aid, it's going to go in probably that pot.
All the money that we get from the town comes from the budget that you, that the taxpayers vote for at the town meeting. We don't get money from McKinney-Vinto, we don't get money from the opioid mitigation, we don't get money from Medicaid, we don't get money from Chapter 70. We get what the townspeople vote for in our budget. Thank you.
Sure.
And for clarity of anyone watching, just because we had this conversation a few minutes ago, we get what the townspeople vote for in our budget. Last week, we voted to approve two options. So if the townspeople choose to allocate those, we can either take the baseline budget or if we so approve an override, it can go to the override, then we approve the lines. So anytime we change lines, we have to approve those as well. So there are certain restrictions within each layer of this process. I got it right finally, right? Okay, there we go. Look at that.
Any other questions?
I have one, I just want to clarify one thing. So what I didn't hear, so we, we made a lot of, we made a, the leadership team made a lot of really difficult decisions in terms of roles and cuts and there was also a number of folks who have left voluntarily through retirement and other choice, personal life choices. When I, in my mind, recall all of the 44 positions that were impacted and I look at the list of what you're providing that we would restore, what I don't see on there, I heard you mention the data analyst position and concern about that, but we have a number of office staff, both in central admin and in the schools, who are not staying with us into next year and I don't see those on the restoration list. So I just want to confirm that those are not part of the plan, that we are restoring to classroom, restoring to critical needs like the ML staff. We've got a few programs we're restoring, we've got nurses. I didn't see that additional support staff on the list, is that correct?
Not yet.
Not yet.
This is the priority-
That are not on priority.
Restorations. So this would happen first.
Okay.
And then depending on how that goes, we're having a lot of changes even right now. We have a position that's being vacated in one school, for example, and a person had to be transferred out of that school, bumped another person who had a layoff. Now that's all moving backwards.
Right.
So that layoff is returning. That has nothing to do with the override or anything, it means some, so there are constant, you know, with 600 people, there are constantly moving parts. And I, and I understand that's why it can seem very different than a police department, for example, where you say, a starting police officer makes this, so if I'm hiring two, that's this much money. But even these positions, we can't quantify yet because we have to wait and see where on the salary scale a person's going to be before we actually know how much that's going to incur.
Okay.
And it, it may depend on the grade level, some positions are harder to get than others, it may depend on the subject for the specialist. So we're not trying to be cagey in any way, but there's no way I can give you a salary number on that. We put in placeholders and that's kind of what gets us to, here's a first pass at priorities. But the chances that everyone comes in at the exact same salary, which is a midpoint placeholder for us, is pretty close to impossible. We do the best we can with longitudinal data and what the market bears for certain positions, but beyond that, we have to wait and see.
I think you have said this, too, there's uncertainty in our kindergarten enrollment, there is uncertainty in our overall district enrollment, there's uncertainty in our ML, multi-language learner leads, it's easier for me to say that than the initials. So it's just, we, there's unknowns at this point in time. But I, I just wanted to clarify as I went through the list, like what we were prioritizing, which I think we've all talked about before, as we're concerned about the nurses, we're concerned about the classroom sizes, we're concerned about those things and then where, and we're concerned about staying compliant to all of our federal needs, right? So we obviously, that's where the data analyst role would come in, but we have not put some of those other things. I didn't see the library staff for BA back on there, like there are certain things we are not putting on our urgent priority list, does not mean we might not get there, but-
It doesn't mean they are valued positions. I want to reiterate that every position that was reduced was purposely, purposefully put there. So we believe that there's a need for all of them, otherwise they wouldn't have been there in the first place. So this isn't to discount anyone's role, but these are and have been our priorities all along and will continue to be.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cabral. Assistant superintendent notes, Mrs. Proit.
I have a few things, as always. So I just want to share with you that the Professional Development Committee put out a survey for all staff to get their input on professional development needs and how they appreciate or, or what they would rather, how they would rather receive professional development when it comes to the two professional development days, but also outside of school hours, professional development that we might offer through Eastern University. We have about 100 that have responded and this is, this is for Unit A and paraprofessionals. So if you could encourage anyone that you speak to to continue filling out that survey would be great, it's extremely helpful to us, the Professional Development Committee as we plug forward. The STEAM team continues to meet. We will, our STEAM night is May 30th, Friday night. We have about, currently we have about 25 tables so far. We are obviously seeking more, that's about the same amount that we had last year, but we are still, we have some, some, some things out to people that we're still waiting to hear back from, so we are anticipating about five or more tables for that. Also, just so you're aware, the next couple school committee meetings, we will be putting before you some contracts for ordering materials because this is our, the time of year where we are gathering POs for next year, our curriculum needs. So you'll be seeing contracts coming before you for our vendors such as Great Minds, which is wit and wisdom, No Adam Bridges, and potentially Open Up Resources, which is our math program illustrative at the middle school. Again, that's only if it's above $25,000, but that is what we're, just so you know that that's coming. And then lastly, we are in the midst of MCAS. We have just a few weeks left and a real shout out to Director Ramos and her team for making sure it is going smoothly. Assistant Principal Aries and Crossman and also Assistant Principal Flanagan. And my understanding is Mr. Mastro Giacomo's been helping out at the high school this year for science, so thank you to everyone. It's been running smoothly. There's been some issues that we've had with the state, but our kids are doing great and they're really taking it seriously, which is great data for us as we get that information back. So those are the updates I have for you, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Proit. Does anyone have questions?
It triggered one for me, so this is probably the million-dollar question that we, none of us totally know the answer to, but are we seeing any shifts in contracts due to potential tariffs? Are we expecting any situations where, or are we thinking we're getting ahead of that in our contract situations right now? I don't know where the materials come from or where we have concerns there.
We're not seeing them in our curriculum contracts right now.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. School committee notes, so for our new members, this is when you can talk about any district events you went to, sporting events, musical events, competitions. If you are on a subcommittee, you can give a report about your subcommittee.
Reminders?
Reminders of dates of, of anything coming up. So we'll start, we'll start with the seasoned veterans over here and then to show you.
I go first, okay. I was not, I don't normally get to go first. I've moved up in my rankings since I have now become a seasoned veteran. Just a few comments, I will say, if you've had a chance to be on campus in the past few weeks, it is buzzing. There is so much going on, so much you guys are all engaged in, so much all the kids are engaged in, it's really awesome to see, I won't do justice to all of it. The art show was, again, incredible. It was absolutely fantastic to see all of the incredible art and the amazing progress the kids make. I also have to just say, the, the art teacher at BA, I brought my little guy, she teaches literally every child at BA. And she stopped him and talked to him and knew his name and all the details, which still blows my mind because I'm not great with names. But every time I meet someone in the district who knows like every child's name, it just blows my mind. So I greatly appreciate all of that, but it was, it was incredible to see, it was really great to see the seniors have a chance to showcase their work. And that happens across the board. I mean, it was, the, the whole area was hopping, we had the big track meet last week, buses were all over town trying to figure out where to park. It's really just great to see all of that, all of the energy, all of the work. I was literally in the building for the art show and there were four events going on in the building and multiple on the field. So it was really fun to see. And to see each of the kids have their home in terms of like their areas of interest and passion is really, really amazing to see as well. I do agree that there is, we do a lot with little funding and we do a lot with amazing people who show up to support the kids and all that they do. So a lot of, a lot of credit to that. I do want to say one thing, I, we had the chance to participate in the, the budget session, which is not normal for a school committee. We, we participate in the sense that we engage and we watch, we don't necessarily play as active as a role as we did this year because of the override budget. And sitting in the meeting last week, I live in the thick of the school committee and I, I lose sleep over the staff that's impacted and the students that are impacted and it, I think about it constantly, but I also sometimes feel like I'm in a school committee bubble. Sitting there and listening to our police and fire speak about what's happening on their side was, was disheartening to me as a member of the community. It was eye-opening as well to realize the significance of impacts on their side. And I think we sometimes focus talking only on the override budget about the schools, which is my passion and what I'm dear and dear to and what I spend my time on, but it is not lost on me the significance and I appreciate the mention of that because we do have a dire, a dire problem on that side as well. And there is a significant issue in terms of our ability to support the emergency services that we need. And that impacts the schools, it impacts the students when there's an emergency here, but it impacts the whole town. And so I hope that the, that any parents who go back and watch us on a school behalf realize the significance of what's happening across the entire community because it's not just about us, even though I live in my bubble. It is very much about what's happening across the board. So I did want to take a moment to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Kelly. Lauren?
That was down.
Sorry. You can go back to the happy stuff, I apologize.
So Jackie, Colleen and I, along with seven students?
Six.
Six students attended-
And Mr. UGA.
Oh, and, and Mr. UGA and a teacher, attend, had the privilege- Attend, had the privilege of attending the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Day on the Hill, which is a day of advocacy and essentially lobbying to your legislatures in the State House. So we have a, a meeting in the morning where we learn about the, the mask priority, priorities for the upcoming year, which is basically everything that's a priority for Eastern. The funding, Chapter Seventy, the circuit breaker. They also have some regional priorities for the regional schools and also for rural schools. But it's so interesting to learn about and seeing, as you eloquently mentioned in, in your, when you spoke, that it's a state issue. It's not just a Eastern issue that we're all facing. And then we went to the, so we have this, our meeting in the morning is at the U Mass Club. And then we walk over to the State House and we had the privilege of meeting with our new, two new representative, our senator and our representative Senator William Driscoll and our representative Bridget Plouffe. They both represent Eastern and they heard our concerns and our, our, our wishes and demands of what we all need, want and need for Eastern. And they take it to their committees when they meet and they hopefully will be fighting for us. And yeah, so it was a great day. It was true, we, we met Representative Plouffe in the lobby. So it was like true lobbying at its definition. So that was, that was a wonderful day. And then there, like Kelly said, last weekend, which was a beautiful weekend, so I think that added to it as well. But this campus was booming. It was on Friday night was just, you couldn't find a parking spot in anywhere at any school. So it was, it's just a really fun time of year. The seniors have ten days left, which is so exciting. We're going to miss Marvel and Franklin. And what else do I have on my notes? Oh, congratulations to everyone that was nominated, appointed, no.
Inducted.
Inducted, thank you.
Yes.
Into National Junior, Junior National Honor Society. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but that's also always a beautiful celebration and ceremony. So that's all I have. Sorry for my blabbing.
I, I forgot one happy note. So, and I, I feel like I have to call it out because we actually had a participant here in the room. But I want to, I do want to give a shout out to all the teachers that played in the game against the Wizards. Some even dressed in costumes, so I appreciate you. It, it was, the kids had such a blast and it was really fun. But like, watching you all have to go out there against like seven foot tall, he might not quite be seven, but it, it was quite an experience. I did, I did take a picture of our, of beloved Assistant Principal, who's like just a petite person compared right next to this incredibly tall basketball player. It was awesome. It was very fun to watch, but so much credit and shout out to all the teachers. I came on a Sunday and spent four hours in a very hot gymnasium playing against the Wizards team because it was, it was so fun for the kids.
And shout out to the Blanche P T A that put it together. Because I know it was a ginormous task and-
Completely sold out.
Completely sold out. But the behind-the-scenes coordination that they did, it was, I watched from afar, was just impressive and amazing. And they deserve a shout out because that was great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jim, is there anything you want to talk about?
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah. First, this week I did also go to the National Junior Honor Society induction with Kelly. That was very fun, brought back a lot of memories as someone who also at one point was in the National Junior Honor Society. I don't know if this is fun for anyone, but a couple of things that have changed since I was in what is now the middle school. It was the junior high at that point. So I was one of the last classes in the junior high. Mr. Carroll was there, but he was the assistant principal. And it was not called the Chapman Gymnasium. I don't know what it, it probably didn't have a name before that.
Nancy would know.
Yeah. So that was great. It was also great to see, credit to our teachers at EMS who picked up everything afterwards, all the snacks, the tables, things like that. Just seemed like they really went above and beyond for the whole event, which was great. This week, I also was part of Citizens Academy, which I would like to just shout out to everyone in town. For everyone who may not know, it is a program that the town runs for about ten weeks where each department head, which I feel like sometimes people think it's like town and school are separate, but school gives a presentation. Fire, police, I T, Town Clerk's Department. This past week was planning and economic development. So shout out to Stephanie Daniels, Wayne, and Jen Carlinow, who led the planning and economic development meeting and actually gave us a tour of downtown Eastern as part of it to kind of show us some of the history about the buildings and also the shovel town apartments and how that project came to be. And then to Jessica Block. I thought it was well-coordinated because then we went to the Ames Free Library and did the library portion of it. So it's a really good, free academy that the town throws to just, I think, introduce people to municipal government. Very last thing, the final PACE open house slash final PACE meeting was last night. So probably getting about five hours back in my life every other week, it seems like. But just-
We'll take that up for you.
Yeah, don't worry.
Now I'll join the municipal building committee. But just a quick reminder, I guess, for anyone who still might not know at this point. Town meeting is May nineteenth. We are voting on some very important issues. So please attend, please vote your conscience, and please don't show up not knowing what we're voting on. I think is all I want to say as a member of the PACE committee. So I think that is, oh, also looking forward to STEAM Family Night, so.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
I'm excited.
So, Colleen? Nancy would like you to know something. The Chapman Gym was named in twenty-twelve. So she's still watching us. She couldn't quite get away and she would like you to know that it was named twenty-twelve.
So I, I appreciate you mentioning Citizens Academy. That was, I was in the inaugural committee. It was my, my favorite, one of my favorite Eastern things that I've done. But sadly, it is, you are the last class because, because of budgets and funding. They are not continuing it. I, I don't know if that's something that will be reinstated. But, but it's such a great opportunity. Okay, I digress, sorry.
Colleen?
Thank you. All right, so I got to go to my very first official school committee event. So I went to Day on the Hill with Lauren and Jackie. And I have to give them both a huge shout out because they did an amazing job advocating with our state representative and our state senator, who were incredibly gracious. The day, the day was amazing. And in the morning, we did learn that most districts in the Commonwealth are struggling with some of the real big issues. We are, transportation costs, circuit breaker, and health insurance are huge issues. It's, it's not an Eastern thing. It's, it's a Commonwealth and Massachusetts thing. And it was, was heartening to realize that there are so many districts struggling and so many people at our legislative, the legislative branch who recognize that and are trying to find a way forward. So I don't know how quickly that relief's going to come, but it is good to know that people are aware of the problem. But the bigger, bigger shout out I'd like to make is that, Dr. Cabral, you should be extremely proud of your staff and your students. The, the students represented themselves incredibly well. I was very proud to be there representing Eastern Public Schools with those students there with us. They were smart, polite, poised, engaging, anything you could ever want. So congratulations to all of them and to Mr. Augur. He was amazing as well.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll just finish up. I want to welcome our two new committee members, Jim Hamilton and Colleen Pradler. Thank you for being here with us and, and participating as much as you have. My first meeting, I think I was terrified to speak and turned bright red any time I had to say anything. So you guys are doing great. As they said, we went to the Day on the Hill. Two of our students are here with us that went. It was great. Appreciate Mr. Augur taking our students. Meeting with Senator Driscoll and Representative Plouffe. They were both very open to what we were talking about, what we've been struggling with. They've heard the same thing, foundation formula, transportation, circuit breaker from many of their other districts. But they were very welcoming to us, said we can get in touch with them anytime, which was great. Senator Driscoll took us all into the Senate chamber and kind of gave us the history of it. It was, it was a really, really nice day. So that was my first time going. I highly recommend it. And that's all I have. So I am going to make a motion to go into executive session, not to return to open session. Can I just? Oh, sure.
We all forgot to mention Happy Educator Week.
Oh, yeah.
We are appreciative of each and every one of you.
Hey, don't we usually sign something or have a proclamation?
You did.
I did?
It was before the break.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. That was my last weekend project, was to do all the notes and things. So now, thank you, I appreciate you for watching the week.
All right, so I'm making a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A two, for the purpose of conducting strategy in preparation for collective bargaining for the E E A units A, B, and C. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A one, to discuss complaints against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Do I have a second?
Second, Loomis.
Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote. So why don't we start at that end? So Jim, all you have to say is Hamilton, yes?
Hamilton, yes.
Or no.
Or no, yeah.
If you don't want to go into executive session, you can say no.
Refuse.
Loomis, yes.
Percy, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Percy.